The Volker ordered a regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Harmon, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Prow.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Present.
Vice Chair Frost.
Present.
Chairman Bronzo.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a first. Okay. Moving right along. Discussion, approval, disapproval, and minutes of the regular meeting conducted on September 19, 2019. Do we have any comments?
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 19 as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt, second by Vice Chair Frost. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to acknowledge that ever since I turned the minutes over to Mari, you guys haven't changed anything yet. I think that was a good move.
Just to comment on that, there was a lot of discussion last meeting, and I thought the way they were written was really quite well. So thank you, Mari. Okay. We don't have any old business, so we'll move right on to new business. Presentation, approval, disapproval of preliminary plat, PZ 1929, Unit 33 for Merrill Ranch. Do we have a presentation?
We do have a brief one. This actually has been through commission and council previously, but it's one of the parcels that D.R. Horton purchased. They've made a couple of minor alterations to it, but enough that we needed to bring it back through the process. About 33, as you noticed on the graphic up there, shows you approximately where it is at in relationship to Hunt Highway, the Johnson Utility Facility, and the rest of Merrill Ranch. It's a total gross acres of 30, little over 33, required amount of open space. Right-of-way is acknowledged. Net acreage is 27.61. Total lots, 150. Density of 4.46. We listed density for each individual once more, just for your information. We have a running log against all of Merrill Ranch, and we compare the overall density to what is permitted in the PUD. At present, and even with those items being presented tonight, we are still below the threshold density that's listed as the maximum for Merrill Ranch. So this falls within those parameters. Quick layout shows you the basic configuration of it. Excuse me. Some of the parcels to the north, the units to the north are already under construction. If you've been out there, this will confirm and go back to the town council for a final plat, this particular unit number. If you have any particular or specific questions related to design or anything, the project engineer is here tonight also.
Really, the only question I have is, what was it that...I missed it. It went right over my head. What was it that brought it back to us?
They...we wanted to increase the number of lots by doing a little bit of adjustment. They picked up four lots. And whenever you preliminary...you approved the preliminary plat previously, it had 146 lots. That's the way it was final-platted and went to council. Since they've done a little reconfiguration, added four more lots, it still meets all the basic criteria.
And the density stays...
I'm sorry?
The density has stayed below the threshold?
Oh, yeah. They're still fine.
Okay.
That's what brings it back, once you increase the lots. When you go preliminary to final, and final recorded, you could reduce the number of lots. We could do that at an administrative level, but when you start increasing it, it has to go back through the process.
Okay. I'll open it to the commission. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, Larry, why did we not get some sort of an exhibit that showed this and our subsequent...
Oh, they weren't attached to your packet? I thought they were attached to the packet. They are not? The plats, the actual detailed sheets?
They didn't come with mine, but we've changed over our system, as you know, in the county, and there's some stuff that's not coming...
That may be an error on our part. We should have had all of the preliminary plat documents attached to it.
I didn't get any exhibits, so I...
I can tell you, though, related to that, those of all...everything presented tonight has been through all of the engineering reviews that are appropriate and been cleared. They wouldn't come to you if they hadn't been.
Which is hard to really look at and get a feeling of what's going on without seeing some exhibits. And this one, I noted on page two of four, it says it's being prepared for grading. Isn't this one already graded?
No.
Okay, this hasn't been...
Is it per...
Please. Okay. Good.
Good evening. I'm Jared Baxter with Baxter's Design Group, and I'm the engineer on the project. This project right here that you're looking at, this unit, is not...well, it's had some minor grading done to it itself right now. It is not into the point where they are installing water and sewer yet. They're still holding off on it, so we're going...it was graded at risk preliminarily, but it's being adjusted according to the new lotting that we have right now.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. I thought it had been mass-graded already.
It's been mass-graded, but it needs...not to a final standpoint right yet. They're at the point where they've mass-graded it to get the dirt moved around and balance between all five subdivisions. That's currently where they're sitting right now. They're in the process of modifying it per the re-lotting that we've done in this area. The streets, the roadways, did not change in this plat from what they originally brought for to you guys. What they did is they had taken some of their larger lot sizes and had reduced them to a smaller lot size, which increased the number of lots by a number of four.
Okay.
If you notice on the aerial that I've just put up, you can see the parcel to...the unit to the north has been graded, and you can see how the streets have already been graded and et cetera. The parcel we're talking about tonight, as Mr. Baxter said, has just been mass-graded at this point.
All right. I just saw them out there doing all the mass-grading.
Right. We will issue at-risk grading permits for projects like this, and that's what has occurred.
How far along will the town permit an at-risk grading permit?
Just for grading. They will not allow...
That's it.
I mean, how far along in your review process will you release?
Oh, we don't...we won't issue one until we're basically at this stage. It wasn't issued until after the preliminary plat was approved the previous time.
Okay.
So, yeah, it has to be at least this stage.
Okay. Now, I guess while I've got Mr. Baxter up, ask him another question.
Sure.
And this applies to, I think, all of our plats we're looking at tonight, so it'll be one...and that is, it says we have a 42-wide right...42-foot wide right-of-way, and since I didn't have exhibits, I tried to go into the town's standard details and couldn't find it. What's our face-to-face dimension on a 42...
Face-to-face, well, it's a rolled curb and gutter, so it really doesn't have a face right now. So it's a five-foot sidewalk, two-foot curb and gutter on each side of the road. So you're losing 14 feet out of that 40 feet with curb gutter sidewalk.
So it's a 28-foot paving?
28-foot street.
So our pavement width is 28 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's been standard for...let's see, when did it change it over? About two years ago? It went from 40-foot...
Well, originally, we had a 40-foot...part of the approved PUD was a 40-foot right-of-way. That's part of the approved PUD, but with the change in ADA codes, we've increased the sidewalks from a four-foot sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk, which then pushed us out to the 42-foot right-of-way.
And does this have sidewalks on both sides?
Yes.
Wow. That's tight.
You'd have to ask the engineering director on it. There's been quite a few discussions with the town council, and with staff, and with emergency fire, and they've proved it multiple times over to the county council that that is a standard and a relatively common standard throughout the valley.
Throughout the valley?
Throughout the valley.
I don't think so, throughout the valley. 50 is a standard, in the county and in the valley that I'm...
It may be a Pinellas County standard, but there's plenty of cities in the valley that has the 42-foot right-of-way.
I'm familiar with the 50, both used by Pinellas County and the municipality that I'm very familiar with in the valley. Okay, that was just a concern, so we'd have about 30 feet total area if we were going vertical curb.
We're never going vertical curb. We're all rolled curb and gutter and sidewalk and subdivision.
An equivalent, would it be about 30 feet then?
Yes.
28 plus one plus one?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. I was just concerned because of fire apparatus setup and the fire code requiring 20 feet clear.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that answered that question. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
One other question, just to...I noticed on here as well, in circulation area, it says it's going...each plat has a minimum of two access points, but then on some of the other ones we looked at, it gave us a number. If we know them, why are we using a minimum of instead of saying it's going to have two, it's going to have three, it's going to have four? That's just maybe a question for Larry.
It's just to make sure that you understand, we have...that we know in each case there's going to be at least two access points. If we...if you'd like, in the future, we can, you know, put in the total number for each one individually, but we're just outlining that we're making the minimum standard on there, which is two access points for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, I just noticed on...noted on some of these, it says a minimum of two, and others it says there are two.
Well, and in some cases, there are only two. Yeah. It's just the semantics of it. We can standardize that if you like.
I just prefer to know how many you're going to have versus a minimum of...that was it. Just again, as you said, semantics. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that was it.
Question? Please. The access point is not necessarily out to the main through affairs.
No. It's not having...
Yeah, it's interconnected, so you end up with, you know, internal flow throughout, so there's different ways of getting it out of the subdivisions.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat application for Unit 3 at Anthem at Merrill Ranch with the stipulations and conditions per staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Was that you?
Yeah.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Schmidt. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, presentation, approval, disapproval, preliminary plat, PZ 1923, Merrill Ranch, Unit 57. Do we have a presentation?
It's a brief one. First of all, on what page two of four of that staff report, there is one error. Second paragraph, the pre-plat includes, scratch out the 90. It's 116, as in parentheses, single-family residential lots. But again, this is a total gross acreage of 27 acres. You can see by the map in your report and up on the screen, this comes off of Merrill Ranch Parkway on the east side of Constitution Way. It's a new parcel back there that is to be developed with a total of 116 lots. Density on it is approximately 4.2 dwellings per acre. Again, it falls...the cumulative total still falls within the maximum allowed throughout the development. The layout, it bets up against a significant wash that comes down on the east side. It's been accommodated by this plat and the upcoming Unit 11, and I can't read my own numbers, Unit 10 below, and complies with all of the requirements of the Anthem at Merrill Ranch PUD recommendation. On this one is also for approval.
Open up to the commission. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, again, Larry, this is just another one of those on top of page two. The site is vacant land that is being prepared for grading. This site is graded, and they are doing underground.
I can't answer for what all the engineering department will issue, but they will do at-risk. And it's exactly that. If there are any changes that come along, then the applicant and developer are responsible for making those changes at their expense.
Again, Jared Baxter, Baxter's Design Group. The parcel has been mass-graded.
Yes.
They are not putting utilities into it at all at this point in time. They are putting utilities into the unit below it, Unit 55.
Okay.
And only on half of that unit is what they're putting utilities in right now.
Okay.
Yes, you're right. It has been mass-graded to balance the dirt between Unit 55 and 57. You've got to do a mass balance between the two, so you don't have a haul-off on that scenario. So, yes, it was mass-graded.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? May I have a motion, please? Somebody step up.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary plat, Unit 57.
Including staff recommendations?
Including staff recommendations.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Who said that?
I did.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Simmons. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Presentation, approval, disapproval, preliminary plat, Merrill Ranch, Unit 58, PZ 1924, 28...oh, let's just say it differently. Merrill Ranch Units 58, 66, and 68, PZ 1924, 28, 25, and 26. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, Chairman Bronzo, members of the commission. Continuing off what we had previously, we have Unit 58, gross acres of 39.92, 12.89 acres of open space, right-of-way 6.06 acres. The net area is...can't read. 33.86 acres and a total of 123 lots, which brings the density to 3.08 dwellings per acre. And this is right along Felix Road.
It's a nicer density.
Okay. And then here's a...
Mari, are you going to represent...are you going to introduce us to them all, or do you...would you prefer that we go one by one?
It's probably best to go one by one.
All right, then. Have you finished with this?
Yes.
So I'll open up to the commission. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, probably my standard comment, that Mr. Baxter is tired of hearing, but it looks like there are areas within here that the police department may have a hard time seeing into. Have police, Larry, have the police department looked at this for policing and give our thumbs up on us. I just don't see any note in here that they've reviewed it as well.
Yeah, police and fire both go over these at the preliminary plat stage, and again, at the final plat stage.
That was it?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Moving along. Mari, please excuse me. What is your last name?
Benitez.
Benitez. Ms. Benitez, would you please move along?
Yes, sir. Unit 64, we have a gross acreage of...28.995, open space of 12.81 acres, the right-of-way of 3.13 acres, a net area of 25.86 acres. Total lots comes to 75, and our density is 2.59 dwellings per acre. It's also buts Felix.
I'll open up to the commission. Questions, comments?
This is just a curiosity question. I think there's an existing well site on this particular plat. Will that be retained and used, or will that be abandoned?
Again, Jared Baxter, Baxter's Design Group. Sorry, I have to say that every time. The well site's actually on the previous unit.
Oh, okay.
Unit 58. It's a well site that we use for the golf course itself. It's not a public water consumption well site. It's a well site we use for the actual golf course watering itself. Yes, it will be maintained for our golf course. It's going to be fenced around. Call it kind of a quasi-lot type scenario that will have well access for the HOA to maintain their golf course site itself. But no, it's not in this unit. It would be actually in Unit 58.
And when you say fenced, does that mean screened, as in a wall for noise and visual...
Yep. Similar to what...we had a similar situation where Johnson Utilities had a well site in Unit 9.
On the east end of it?
On the east side, over next to Felix Road. If you ever drove past those units or had a chance to drive past it, it has the full 20-foot rolling gate on the front of it, but it's fully fenced and blocked all the way around itself to provide security to it, and then also not eyesore to the residents of that unit itself.
This one is a vertical turbine, though, right?
Yes, and it may need to be adjusted at that point in time.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure we had sound attenuation for the folks that are going to live there.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Benitez. Are I open to the commission? Any other questions or comments?
No, nothing here.
And please, Ms. Benitez, would you proceed?
We have Unit 66 on the other side of the mapping area with gross acreage of 27.7 acres, open space of 10.24 acres, a right-of-way of 3.54 acres, a net area of 24.24 acres, total lots 76, and a density of 2.74 dwellings per acre.
And I think, just quickly to note, you'll notice these several right through here are below the threshold listed in the PUD. This is where it averages out to 3.5 or less.
Yeah, I've been noticing. Nice. Okay, I'll open to the commission. Questions, comments? I'll take the silence as none. Ms. Benitez, please.
Our final unit in this section is Unit 68 with a gross area of 37.2...is that two acres or two three?
Two, three.
Two, three acres.
She forgot her glasses.
It's been a long day.
Well, would you like me to do it?
No, I have it. I got it. Open space of 11.75 acres, right-of-way of 5.25 acres, net area of 31.98, and total lots of 116. Density is 3.12 dwelling units per acre.
Opens the commission. Questions, comments, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please. Larry, will we have an opportunity sometime to actually see the landscape packet that's being brought together and the amenities that they're proposing?
If you like. Normally, those have been staff-reviewed, administratively-reviewed. There's like a...
They come in the final...
Here, where I can use the cursor. There's like a master landscaping theme that's already been established out there that runs along the outside, and then on the interior, any place where, as you see that little pocket right there adjacent to that lot, any place where there's public open space, we review those for landscaping, landscape density, plant materials list, and on the irrigation plants. We've been doing that administratively. Apparently, they've been doing it that way for some time. But there is a master theme that's already been established. If you like, however, when we get into the final plating stage and the engineering plan reviews, we could bring that back to you, just, you know, to demonstrate what it looks like. No problem.
And maybe I should have clarified, and I should have spoken up earlier. On this side of the development, the Sun City side, is probably not as critical, because I kind of get a feeling that the packet is there, and the amenities there are basically the golf course. But on the park side of the development and other developments where it's designed for families with smaller children, I think it behooves us to see what amenities that they're proposing.
Certainly.
And what pocket parks, what they're doing there and things like that.
Yeah. We could put together a presentation for you for your next meeting, show you what's been proposed and approved in those areas. But there's a series of playgrounds, Ramadas, a lot of amenities.
I would be curious to see that and see how they're faring.
Yeah, we'd be happy to put that together for you.
Good point. You understand Anthem a lot better than I. Okay, that was Unit 68. Do we have anything more, Ms. Benitez, on that?
No, there is nothing more.
Okay. Then, do we have any other questions or comments? Then I will move that we approve preliminary plats for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Units 58, 64, Unit 66, and Unit 68. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman. I'll second it.
Excuse me?
Yes. How could I forget with staff conditions?
Of course.
So motion by Chairman Bronzo, second by Commissioner Pro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Moving right along. If I can just stay organized long enough. Here we go. Presentation, redevelopment plan update. Isn't that a scary word, redevelopment?
Unfortunately, that is the term used in the statute, so we use it. I like preferring to it as stabilization and revitalization myself, but...
Quick question. I saw something on the...on Facebook, as a matter of fact, for a downtown redevelopment plan. These are not the same...
This is it.
It.
Same thing.
Okay.
And as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'll mention again at this, there is a public open house scheduled for October 17, 4:30 to 6:30, to start initiating comments, collecting comments from the public on some of the draft layouts for the plan at this stage. It's all open for comment and adjustment, and the open house will be at the community center, again, 4:30 to 6:30. That's also your next meeting night. And so we would encourage you all to attend that, and then we'll float back over here at 6 o'clock for our meeting.
All right. So all you folks out in TV land, that scary word. You better show up.
Yeah. We actually have posted it on the town's Facebook page. There'll be a PSA in the newspaper, courtesy of Mark Colling. We have...we are sending out invitations to various boards and commissions. Chamber of Commerce is going to be distributing an invitation to their membership and any other forums that we have access to. The mayor announced it yesterday at the State of the Town address yesterday morning, so we're getting a lot of advertising out as best we can prior to that open house. At the conclusion of that, comments will be taken in. We'll be sitting down with the consultant and fine-tuning the land use layout, streetscape, concepts, things of that nature, and start working towards some of the final recommendations for the plan.
Moving along to the general plan update.
Well, following state statute, we are in the process of updating the 2020 general plan that was adopted in March of 2010 by the voters. It goes to council on the 21st for contract award to begin the process. So we've already gone through the request for qualifications phase. We've had interviews of four submittals, and we got them for the main four consulting teams in the state. It was actually a very close race to get the recommendation to move forward. The team that we did end up selecting and are recommending to the council has a lot of strong background knowledge and previous experience in Santan Valley and down into the town of Florence. They have pretty good basis of knowledge, which they can draw from, which therefore facilitates them acquiring information, data, et cetera, for the general plan update.
Have we used them before?
Yes, for other projects, yes.
So they're familiar?
And the county has used them also. They're the same firm that did the Santan Valley master plan, which is recently completed.
Good. All right. Future agenda items?
October 17, we'll be doing a presentation, a free presentation on some of the landscape and recreational facilities and amenities for our side. Also, there's another preliminary plat. We have one of the old developments called Mesquite Trails that is coming back to life. It's north on Felix Road on the east side of Felix, right across from Crestview Manor and the Equestrian Development up there. There's already five recorded final plats on that. This will be the sixth one. And these will...this will complete, and you'll see it in the presentation at the time, this will complete the package of plating north of a major wash that crosses this property. Also, it's been adjusted slightly to accommodate the most current... Also, it, it's been adjusted slightly to accommodate the most current alignment for the north-south corridor, which will run through upper corner of this area and will, you know, impact it a little bit, but not much. But that preliminary plat will be coming to you at that next meeting also. It's already gone through engineering, traffic, and fire department review, public safety review.
Question. Now, the ADOT has showed us a preferred, preferred route for the north-south corridor. How do we coordinate these subdivisions against what their preferred route is?
Well, and that, that's going to be an ongoing process, to say the least. The preferred route right now does not impact anything directly adjacent to it that's active. This will be the first one, and it's going to be our duty, you know, with the town to actually help coordinate that type of impact, how it goes through. The corridor is about fifteen-hundred-foot wide. Final right-of-way width is, you know, it's going to be generally, as I understand it, about four-hundred feet. And so, it's going to be somewhere within that corridor. And so, we will coordinate with a variety of the various developers that already have PUDs up and down that corridor, things like that. We've already been in discussion with one that was known as Monarch, which is a little further north, Freedom Farms, which is a PUD, which is up on Bellavista, as I recall, across from, south of Magic Ranch. They're coming back alive, and so now that that alignment has been somewhat cast, then these developments are starting to wake up and accommodate it as it comes through. So, it's going to be part of each one of their PUD amendments or initial plating stages or whatever it might be. So, we'll be coordinating that at staff level with each of these developers.
Great. Please.
So, it's my understanding, what you're saying then is what ADOT has proposed now, what they're, what they're putting out now is that the corridor will be east of Felix Road?
It's, it moves around. We, I can put that on the agenda and show you for the next meeting, show, get some pictographs of the alignment. We can go over it briefly. I'll check with the manager and town engineer and see if they want to do a formal presentation, but it'd be easy enough for us to kind of walk you through it and show you where it ends up. It does move around. It tried to accommodate a number of things, and it's pretty much standard engineering practices. It's trying to hit any major crossings of railroad washes, whatever it might be, at a right angle as much as possible, so it moves around to accommodate that. Also, trying to honor some of the existing developments that are along the way. That's why, you know, the only, and actually, Pinellas County, Coolidge, and Town of Florence all went together and had resolutions of support for a certain alignment. We got about ninety, ninety-five percent of what we all wanted. There is one piece close to the downtown that ADOT went a different direction. They expressed their rationale the other night briefly. You know, is everybody a hundred percent happy? Not necessarily. You know, we still would like to have the one portion of it closer to the downtown so that we don't suffer the same consequences that a lot of communities had when I-10 went through. They used, the other night, they used Wilcox, for example, as an example, of how a downtown died because Interstate 10 bypassed it so much. And so, well, I'll demonstrate all that to you at the next meeting. We'll just do a presentation on it.
Well, I know, just from my own past, Interstate 10 was supposed to be on the east side of Signal Peak, and because the business owners and powers of being in Coolidge at the time didn't want it that close, they didn't want the challenge to their businesses, they petitioned and ended up moved to the other side over by Castle Grand. Now, Castle Grand is the size it is, and Coolidge is...
Suffering.
Suffering from it. Exactly to the point, so I, and that's just my own history with the Coolidge area. I don't want to see it happen here.
It's going to be a long time before we ever see that road.
Well, it's still, yeah, and we can give you more detail on that, but it's still, the whole thing is still in the court right now.
Yeah.
With the use of the sales tax dollars, to set aside, they've collected almost twenty million, but they can't spend any of it yet.
Okay, is there anything else, Mr. Harmon?
Not from staff, thank you.
Great. Then, call to the public. Do we have anyone from the public? And I will close, call to the public. Call to the commission, current events only.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please, Larry, we had mentioned, or I had mentioned, I guess, a desire to hear about the water resources.
I should have mentioned that. Yeah, the, having the town manager prepare a presentation he wants to bring to you. We just haven't set the date yet for that.
What was that presentation for?
On water resources.
Any other current events? Okay, well, then, I will close. Call to the commission. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I will, I will move to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Who wants a second? Before I couldn't get a motion, now you're fighting over it. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, second by Commissioners Pro and All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think there's an opposed left. We are adjourned, gentlemen.